How are you?
Oh, no.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good.
How's everybody?
Yes, what's going on? Yeah.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us here tonight. I'd like to call the order, the Highland Park City Council in-person and virtual regular meeting scheduled for Monday, November 20th at 7:00 PM. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Ashafi.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin. Councilwoman Manica.
Here.
Council Pro Tem Robinson.
President.
Council President Thomas.
Here. The next item is the approval of the agenda, City Council. Our Ms. Burden would like to address council before we move forward on this. If you would, ma'am.
Well, if they have any other items first, I don't know.
Okay, so again, we're gonna go, we're gonna open the floor. This is for item three, the approval of the agenda. The members have had an opportunity to review the agenda that was set. And at this point, the chair will open a motion on the approval of the agenda. I mean, open the floor for a motion on the approval of the agenda.
I have something I want to remove. I just.
Yes, ma'am. If you would, go ahead and interject.
Okay, I didn't know if Councilwoman Ashafi was gonna raise it or not. That was why. Okay, I'll be definitely not. Councilwoman Ashafi? The resolution to approve the new city employee handbook. Is that correction that's gonna be made and it's gonna be presented at the next meeting?
Yes, please.
Is that okay? Okay, so we're gonna remove that from tonight's agenda.
I greatly appreciate it.
So the chair is open for a motion on item three?
And we have another one.
Yes, ma'am.
Under item number five, Community Development, number A, the resolution to approve the option to purchase the sale of commercial lots at 11811 and 11817 Hamilton to Sepia Coffee Project. We'd ask that that be removed at this time so that language in the resolution can be corrected. And also because the option of purchase is a new method of selling properties, we'd ask for a workshop on that item.
Okay, I think we have two that you mentioned before. So just to recap, you wanted to remove item 5A and the other item again?
Would be under number six, B. The new employee handbook.
Okay.
To make one change.
So right now, the discussion, our attorney was providing for us was on their recommendation, at this point, we are interested in giving, after what we heard, a motion on the floor to take some action.
So can we approve the last, the agenda first from last meeting?
No, this is the approval.
No, we approve the agenda before we approve the minutes.
Yep, today's agenda. So we just need to, if someone wanted to make a motion to get this approved with modifications, now this is the time to do it.
I would like to make a motion to have item under Community Development of 5A, a resolution to approve option to purchase and sale of of commercial lots located at 11811 and 11817 Hamilton for, I'm hoping I'm saying this right, Surper, how you say that name? Surper Coffee, a project LLC. And also to have removed under legal, which is 6B, a resolution to approve new city employee handbook.
So the one thing I didn't hear at the beginning, you making a motion to approve the agenda with these amendments?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the agenda with these amendments.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Ashafi for the approval of the agenda with the following amendments for under item 5A, the removal of that resolution and also under 6A, the removal of that item, that resolution. We have a motion on the floor. Councilwoman Manica, would you like to second?
I would second it. I wanna second it, but I wanted to ask a question for that.
Yes, ma'am.
I heard council mention a workshop, so that's supposed to be in this?
We have, we have to work the, the workshop has to be worked out.
Number, in number A, that was the request that it be sent to workshop.
So should that be in that motion?
Yeah, yes, yeah. Motion to, a motion to move 5A to workshop and a motion to to remove 6B until, until the next regular meeting.
Do you have support?
Hold on, I think you have a question.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Ashafi to approve tonight's agenda with amendment of removal of item 5A and the removal of item 6B. We have support from Councilwoman Manica. I will ask for the calling of the roll on the approval of the agenda.
Councilwoman Ashafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Pro Tem Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, for item four, this is the approval of the minutes in-person and virtual regular meeting for November 6, 2023. Council, what's your pleasure?
I want to make the motion to approve the appointments for November 6, 2023.
You have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Martin for the approval of the in-person and virtual regular meeting for November 6, 2023. Does she have support? Do we have support? We have support from Councilwoman Manica. Would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Ashafi?
No.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Pro Tem Robinson?
No.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. I always set aside a bit of time for the mayor. I don't know if the mayor has anything for us tonight.
She said something to me. Hold on. She wasn't feeling well, I don't know.
I know she's on remotely today. Well, I'm sure if she had something, then she would have let us know by now. She's definitely on.
Yeah, I have something that she wanted to say.
Okay, well, so Ms. Burden has a statement that the mayor has provided for her, and we're gonna allocate this time so that she can read the statement.
Yes, good evening, everyone. The mayor is not feeling well, but she said she wanted to let everyone know that she appreciated all those who came out to the town hall meeting last week. And she said a lot was shared, and she's looking forward to moving the city forward by growing not only the number of people that live in Highland Park, but to make sure that there is adequate housing for them, so.
Thank you very much.
She's not feeling well, okay.
Thank you. At this time, we'd like to set aside a portion of time before we get into our agenda. Allow for citizens who had comments on agenda items for our agenda, we have one item under Community Development, so resolution to submit an application to the state of Michigan. State of Michigan grant for financially distressed cities, villages, and townships. We have a resolution to convene a closed session, which is not up for discussion. Under Finance, we have the submission of our monthly financial statement. Under Engineering, we have a resolution granting dedication of Oakland Park Boulevard. We also have a resolution to accept Wayne County annual maintenance permit, annual payment restoration permit, and annual permit for special events as requested by City Engineering Department. Under the Water Department, we have a resolution to hold a public hearing on December 18th. For the fiscal year 2024, Water Department budget and rates as requested by the Water Department. We also have a resolution requesting the public advertisement for purposes of receiving construction bids for the 2023 water main and service line replacement project as funded by the American Rescue Plan, the state revolving fund grant. Those are the items that are on the agenda and that are up for discussion. If we have anyone that wants to come to the podium to discuss those items, this is the time to do so. I see absolutely no movement in the room. I don't see any hands online, so I'm going to move on to item five under Community Development. It will be the new item A, that's a resolution to submit an application, or applications for the 2024 State of Michigan Grant for Financially Distressed Cities, Villages, or Townships. City Council, what is your pleasure on item five?
A motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve item 5A from Councilwoman Ashafi. Do we have support? I heard Ms. Manica first. It doesn't matter which one he wants to be credited for. Both of them offered support. Madam Clerk, if you would be so kind as to call the roll on item 5A.
Councilwoman Ashafi?
Absolutely.
Councilwoman Martin? Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Pro Tem Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, thank you. Motion carries. Item six, under the Legal Department, we have a resolution to convene at the closed session to review an attorney-client privilege member random from the city attorney. City Council, what is your pleasure?
Move to go in the closed session.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Ashafi on item 6A. He's making a motion to move into closed session. Does he have support? Have support from Councilwoman Manica. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Ashafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin? Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Pro Tem Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, it is 7:13. We will leave our open session and go into the closed session and reconvene the meeting.
Yeah, I heard him say that downstairs, yeah.
I say.
I say. Yes. Yeah. If you want. But now you could tell you that maybe you should. They have.
You have.
You have. I don't. Say all attention. So now we. Yeah, I'm only, I'm really saying. I started.
Yeah, she got.
Very good.
Be back, I gotta let. I love it.
There's the shot.
But you are. Man, you tell you shower.
Oh, yes, sir.
We'll sit down.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are back from our closed section. The chair will entertain a motion to reconvene our open session.
I move to reconvene as open session.
We have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Manica seconded by Councilman Ashafi. Would you please call the roll?
Councilman Ashafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Thank you very much, yes. So we are moving out of item six in the legal department now. We are under item seven. Finance at a submission of the monthly financial statement for October twenty twenty three. City council, what is your pleasure?
I move to receive and file.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica to receive and file the monthly statement, financial statement for October twenty twenty three. Do we have support? Chair offer support. Madam Deputy clerk, would you please call the roll on item seven?
Councilman Ashafi?
No.
Councilwoman Martin?
No.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson?
No.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion fails. We will not receive our monthly financial statement for the month of October. Under item eight, engineering department, we are at item eight A resolution granting the dedication of the Oakland Park Boulevard partial tax ID four three dash zero one four zero 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 one three oh four and four three zero one four zero one zero 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 one dash three one one to the public road right of way. City council, what is your pleasure on item eight A?
Motion to approve with questions.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilman Ashafi for the approval of item eight A, the resolution granting the dedication of Oakland Park Boulevard. Do we have?
Support.
Support from Councilwoman Manica. The floor is yours, Mr. Ashafi. What is your question?
Uh, so council president, if possible, if I talked earlier with Ms. Kathy Square, she explained it so beautifully. It made sense after she got done talking. She could give the public an overview as exactly what this means because I have a good understanding of it now, thanks to her.
Ms. Square, is that your discretion?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
My voice.
I'll take it.
Floor is yours, ma'am.
Speak softly.
Good evening, everybody. Good to see you. Good to see everybody out there. Um, I talked to Councilman Al Shafi earlier about the road and how it was in the city's name. And so a formal dedication to the city means that we are now required to maintain it. From my understanding, it's the boulevards. Okay, the boulevards on Oakland. Previously, the, 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 when, when Stuart Frankel owned the property over there, he maintained those boulevards, right? And so he sold that property. It's funny how I, I'm, I'm such a nerd. I forgot to renew my licenses on the cars because I'm so worried about Highland Park's business and I forget about my own. But so I was correct in telling you that they were previously maintained by the development. That development has since sold. It's now the boulevard, so we're going to be responsible for maintaining them. Uh, we get act fifty one money for Oakland, so we have the money in our budget. It's just that they wanted them to look real pretty back in the day. So now we're going to have to cut them or whatever. But now I'm going to segue off to, to Damon. So I'm just glad I was right. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. The, uh, so the good news is that mileage will get added to act fifty one.
Okay.
Right? It currently was not and it will. And this is, uh, some housekeeping that's been around since Christ alive. And that got redeveloped. We were supposed to, it was supposed to get dedicated for years and years and, and it didn't. So this was something that we needed to clean up because of the sale of the property. We couldn't have a new owner and then just have right away out there. It was private, should be public. So that's, that's all I really have to add to what Ms. Square said.
Additional questions before I call for the roll?
No, sir, I'm good.
Okay, Madam Deputy clerk, would you please call the roll on item eight A?
Councilman Ashafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. Moving to item eight B under the engineering department. This is the resolution to accept the Wayne County annual maintenance permit. A twenty four zero fifty eight, the annual pavement restoration permit, A twenty four one one three, the annual permit for special events, A twenty four one four six, as requested by the city engineering department. City council, what is your pleasure on item eight B?
I move to approve a resolution to accept Wayne County annual maintenance permit, A two four zero five eight, annual pavement restoration permit, A two four one one three, annual permit for special events, A two four one four six, as requested by the city engineering department.
Chair offer support. Madam Deputy clerk, we have, we have any questions?
Uh, yes, I have a question, Council President. Um, I read this, Mr. Garrett, and I read it. I read it three times. It, it really didn't make sense to me. What are the permits for? If you can give me a little insight into these permits, especially the, uh, the special events permit.
Okay, so just to give you a little history. So we exchange permits between Highland Park and Wayne County. So we issue an annual permit in Highland Park to allow them to do certain activities and they issue an annual permit to us to allow us to do certain activities. So we, so since we had this blanket permit, we're able to dig up, uh, pavement in there right of way and restore without going to get an individual permit and submitting application fees. Same thing goes for, so this allows us to hold special events within their right of way under this permit.
Okay.
And, uh, and then any restoration that needs to take place in their right of way, we can do that under this permit. Have something similar with DTE, but then there's things like changing out light bulbs. If we had them, some general maintenance things that fall under the general permit with DTE, but then if they need to come do any digging, then they have to come do an individual permit. So these blanket permits says you could do these, these activities without having to do more paperwork because that's the overall explanation for this.
Okay, and it's something that's, that's exchanged every year, right?
Yes, we've done this annually every year.
Okay. Oh, who is, um, Mr. Andrew Richmond? He said permit holder name and authorized age.
Did you know Mr. Richmond right here?
Oh, okay.
You know, it's, it's like this.
Okay.
It's large, medium and small. So Andrew is medium, I'm small and giant is large. That's how you, that's how you remember.
Okay. All right, fair enough. Okay. All right, Council President, I'm good.
Okay, let's call the roll on item eight B.
Councilman Ashafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Garrett, but don't go anywhere.
Oh, I'm now.
Okay, so, uh, on to item nine for the water department. We have item nine A, the resolution to hold a public hearing on December the eighteenth, twenty twenty three for the fiscal year twenty twenty four, water department budget and rates as requested by the water department. Um, city council, what's your pleasure on item nine A, please?
I move to approve a resolution to hold a public hearing for the fiscal year two thousand twenty four, water department budget and rates as requested by the water department.
Chair offer support. We have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica to approve item nine A, resolution to hold a public hearing on December eighteenth, twenty twenty three, the fiscal year twenty twenty four, water department budget and rates as requested by the water department. Uh, chair offer support unless we have any other questions, Madam Deputy clerk.
I do have a question, council.
We have questions on the floor, Mr. Ashafi. Go ahead.
Um, Mr. Garrett, um, uh, have we been authorized, I, I, well, I, I should say, is it a requirement of ours to increase these rates, uh, per the agreement that we, uh, settled with the Great Lake, uh, Water Authority?
Uh, yes, it is. Now, I would say the requirement is to take the full Gleewa amount being charged, which we have not done up until this was resolved. So we were taking our old contracts where sixty five percent of what they were billing and now we have to take a hundred percent. So what you have before you are additional expenses that are going to come into, uh, the budget that have to be balanced by the rates being increased. So the answer, short answer is yes to your question.
Okay, so, so, um, at the town hall meeting, uh, you kind of, you kind of touched on this matter.
Yeah.
And you said that the, uh, that the rise could be anywhere from fifty to a hundred dollars per household.
The, the total bill, not?
Okay, right, I, I, I know that's not a, a set number.
Right.
But you know, I'm, I'm sitting here and when it, when it, when it comes to money, if, if it's a hundred dollars, that's, that's twelve hundred dollars a year per household. If it's fifty dollars, that's six hundred dollars a year extra per household. You're going to have a hard time convincing Highland Parkers that this has been their best interest.
Okay.
Okay, water is a very delicate issue here. And one thing about Highland Park is they do not like people telling them, hey, rates have got to go up, you know what I'm saying? So it's going to have to be some sales convincing here. You know what I'm saying? Because this particular item here, believe it or not, this is a recall item. Everybody's sitting here, but it's on the line. Okay, this is a serious thing here. Okay, the water is very serious in the city of Highland Park. Highland Park residents do not play when it comes to the water.
Well, you know, I know. You know, I know that.
Okay, so, so, so we have to dot every I, cross every T, every resident must be convinced. Okay, I am not about to go out on a limb and say, yeah, let's do it. And then next year I'm looking at a recall, sitting in the corner crying to myself. No.
Understood, understood.
They not doing it. This, this, this is a recall issue right here.
Okay, so let, let me talk to you a little bit about.
I see you, Ms. Manic.
So we, we had, so this, this agreement got settled after several years of litigation, right? And there were a bevy of things being considered and discussed, right? So, you know, the rates had been suppressed based on those old contracts, okay? So there was no way that we were going to avoid a rate increase. So, you know, it came between taxes on your property or some adjustment to the rates. Okay, so as a part of the litigation being settled, taxes is in, is in the rearview mirror now, right? So now what we're trying to do is mitigate the increase. There's no way that we can avoid an increase. Now, that hundred dollars that we were talking about was, they gave us a laundry list of all these things that they want us to do overnight. Okay, so fix all the water main, uh, balance the budget, you know, the water budget, go, taking from the general fund, don't do that anymore. Now that the litigation's settled, make up for six months. We're already halfway through the fiscal year. Oh, by the way, and go make up for the last six months that passed with these new rates. So all of that went into that hundred dollar increase. We're not doing that. We're not, that's not happening, okay? So where we are now is in this thirty to fifty dollar range that has all these things that I don't have all the answers right now. For example, we're talking about debt payments, right, on previous loans. Well, we just last week asked the state to defer the principal interest out a couple years. Why? Because we need to get the meter in the ground, okay? That's the other thing is, as a part of the litigation, we want to get these meters in the ground because that was the precipice of the argument of they want to charge us this, but we believe it's this. Well, when you put the meters in the ground, then you actually know what you should be charged. But in the interim time, we have to do some increase. Okay? But I would, I'm going to tell you, it's not going to be a hundred. Now, the other thing is the state is committed. There's, uh, now that the litigation's gone, you know, the RAP program, we couldn't take advantage of, right? There was millions of dollars that were given to Cleveland that we couldn't take advantage of because we're in litigation. Now we can take advantage of those. We've got the THA program that has four million dollars, in excess of four million dollars to support this rate increase. So this is not going to be, hey, your fifty dollar bill goes to a hundred and you're just out. There's, there's, they've been talking to, uh, Kresge, Kellogg, there's a lot of things in motion to the tune of, I don't know, a couple million dollars in support annually to help the increase in the rates. So it's, it's, I, I know that water is a thing in the city, as you know that I know that. I know that rates are a thing in the city. You know that I know that. So, you know, right now where we are is trying to get a budget that has, is going to need to be amended again in six months. The rates are going to have to be looked at again in six months. And every, I don't know if it's, I think it's, uh, twice, every year annually, we have an independent part of the settlement, independent consultant that comes in, looks at the books, looks at the budget, looks at the rates. That's not even us. That's, that's a third party that's hired. So there's going to be a lot of rate discussions, but what I'm hoping for is by twelve thirty one next year, in the, in the agreement, it says we have to have that master meter in the ground. Okay, that's how much, that's how we're going to be able to tell how much water we're actually using, how much is actually leaking, which all of that has been a part of this discussion that is now kind of behind us.
Mr. Man, Mr. Garrett, I'm going to stop you right there because what we were supposed, and I appreciate all that information and that's why I didn't want to interrupt you. What we're supposed to be doing right now is approving a resolution to hold a public hearing.
That's correct.
Okay, Ma, Ms. Square, if you would.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So first of all, council's not going to get recalled over this.
Okay.
This is not true. You, you're part of the solution, but you didn't create this problem. So then nobody's going to walk in there and recall you because of this settlement. This has been going on for ten years, probably twenty years. You were from high and far, remember twenty years ago? You remember ten years ago when the plant got shut down? And so nobody's recalling, they may recall, you try to recall you for some other stuff. But it will be this. This problem you inherit. Um, first of all, this is a proposed budget. It's a proposed temporary budget for six months. So everybody knows we weren't going to come out of this without a problem. And, and we knew that we had to save our houses because next Friday is December first. That's when you would have got the tax bill. Judge Joseph was putting, he was going to break up the map and put a portion on your taxes, which is going to kill you. Water bills, we have come to the conclusion after this negotiation because the governor has stepped in. Thank God the governor is not leaving December thirty first. If she were leaving December thirty first, I have some concern. I'd be like you. I have some concern. But she's got three more years in office. And so what they are doing now is to try to, to minimize the impact. So this is what Gleewa wanted. Gleewa had to have some blood. So this is what Gleewa wanted, Gleewa had to have some blood. And things that we learned in the mediation were things like, they turn the water on Senator Highland Park, it's not, it's not based on use. It gets based on use when we have to keep the retail billing. So what they've said to us is, we want five hundred thousand dollars a month until we make an adjustment in six months and until the meter goes in. And then we want to see what the meter readings are for another year. We probably got a two-year problem. Right now, we pay them about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a month. So we got a hundred fifty thousand dollar a month problem. And you got a big problem in the town because the town is abject. So this development talk, we talk about development, but this development talk is really super important. We need to see bulldozing, black elimination, neighborhoods being built, all of that. Because what's happening is, the residents that are left and the businesses that are left are stuck with this bill. And so it's a problem. So when I said the other night, to those of you who were at the town hall meeting, heard me say, again, this fight is not over. Don't even get comfortable, this deal falls through, Ju- July one is the other, the next tax day. So nobody really, nobody really cares about the city except for you all. Know that, that you are the ones that have to save the place. Now, the governor believed us, because if she did believe us, she wouldn't have supported that legislation that has put millions of dollars of infrastructure money for the future. It's for the future. So development's going forward, she believed in us, she heard us. Something convinced her that we weren't lying because we had contracts. Contracts that weren't on our contracts that were in. So bottom line, if you, the thing about places like THAW is, THAW is not based on income. That's why THAW's, that's why Damon said they put form in it. So if you can't pay your bill, you go to THAW. Now, some of the, uh, people who live in Highland Park, when you hear Highland Park, you know, they've got forty percent poverty rate, a lot of the people who are in abject poverty in this city live in subsidized housing and don't pay a water bill. So that was an issue. So our problem is gonna be with places like HUD because in the past, HUD has stiffed us for hundreds of thousands of dollars. That's why we've got to look at the ordinance. Because if we have to sue you, we need to get our legal fees. We've got these land banks, we got, I had to talk about the school district, but the school district didn't pay their fees. They didn't pay them because back in the day when water was cheap, you know, we, before you had all these pollution requirements and all these combined overflow and where the technology got really expensive in water, water. But I remember when I first came to Detroit, water bill in my house was fifty-four dollars a month. It's four hundred dollars a month now. And I'm not home, I'm standing here talking about, I'm not home, washing, washing nothing, cooking, cleaning this room, and I ain't, I'm not home because of the drainage and all that stuff. So bottom line, no one should panic because the biggest brunt will be on the businesses because that's where the biggest brunt of the business, and taxes are in Highland Park anyway, the businesses. And then the residents who are in subsidized housing and don't pay a water bill, it won't affect them at all. That's forty percent of the population. And then what I, what I call the working poor, people like, you know, this girl's work to pay bills, yeah, right? Those people will have, if they can't pay it, they will have the foundation support, which is why we pushed this public hearing to the December eighteenth so we can work out more details. And what we submitted to council was a worst-case scenario, three-case scenario, worst-case, medium-case, and best-case scenario to minimize these rate increases. So if there is a rate increase that you can't pay, there's only something to help. And that, the governor's making sure of that because she didn't want this deal to be this great deal and then all of a sudden you got a water bill you can't pay. Right, so thank goodness for that. So, and we're still working on things like that. And it said, um, there, we have asked that all of our beds get repaid. We've asked for everything, we've heard of this water problem, might as well ask both of us. And that would free up some cash because this, this hundred and fifty thousand dollar a month we're on. Now, that's three-fiftieth average because we collect more during parts of the year when people are using more water. But this is no time for us to get worried, it's no time to get scared, it's no time for us to worry about recall, nobody's recalling you for this, it's not their fault. And this is gonna get worked out, so I just wanted to say that so that you're not, uh, in a panic about getting, so remember when the water bill was worth that time, they were like ten thousand dollars when they did go up? Forget all that, that's never gonna happen to you again. So now you're gonna, you're gonna move forward, and we've been trying to, uh, get something together when we can have an amnesty before the new rates get in so everybody can come in and give them whatever bills they have straight so they can start from zero. So, so no, there's no way that I would let that happen. But the problem is, when you're in negotiations, what we had to do when, you know, there was pressure because we were trying to get it done before the new legislature got in there, because now it's a stalemate, we probably would've never got this deal that we got with the new legislature because we don't have the, the, the Democrats, you know, and vote, running both houses and the governor. So we had a window of opportunity to sell, we're gonna make this thing stick. And so, and we're also doing other things because the council also had other engineering, uh, issues where we're trying to get the rate down to where we think it should be anyway. So, that's why I'm resting, that's why I'm resting because the Highland, my daughter told me not to holler. Problem is, I'm loud. It's hard for me not to holler if I'm just loud, eh? But I'm trying not to holler.
Holler, yeah, please don't holler.
But I just wanted you to know, there's no way that I would have you, you know, in fear of some high bill that's just gonna put you in a horrible situation. So the next few weeks, we'll have a tighter, we probably need to have another meeting before the public hearing, this is tomorrow, I'm gonna go to the first, if I can, I'm gonna rock. Smile when you say that. It was kind of a half smirk smile. But, don't, we're gonna work it out, we're gonna get through it, and it's gonna be fine, okay?
All right, thank you very much. So if we can get back to the matter at hand, um, Ms. Manica has to be heard. And then let me remind, let me remind the members of council what is on the floor. There was a resolution to approve, I mean, there was a motion made to approve item nine A. That's a resolution to hold a public hearing. That's what we were supposed to be discussing. We discussed a lot of other valuable things, but just want to make, I want to bring council back to the floor to remind us that we have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded. Ms. Manica, if you would, and Ms. Martin, after that, I'd like to call for the roll on that item. Go ahead, ma'am, please.
I did not have a question, I was just going to say the exact same thing. We were approving, I was making sure, thank you for all the information. We were approving, um, the public hearing, it could be moved to vote, but I think Ms. Martin has a question.
I just listened there, are we talking about December eighteen, twenty twenty-three, or twenty twenty-four?
Tw- twenty-three, ma'am.
Okay, because it says in here twenty-four.
I'm looking at the agenda right here, that says twenty. Uh, hold on a second, let me, let me, let me, let me, let me, let me go take a look at what the councilwoman is saying here.
This is for the twenty-four budget.
It's this December, correct?
It is this December. Yeah, thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
So I will go back.
Okay.
I will go back to my motion.
Okay. Okay. That has to be corrected, so we have a motion on the floor, Ms., uh, Councilwoman Manica.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, uh, Councilwoman Martin, actually, you just, you just pulled a Hail Mary, you did, you like the lions in the last two minutes, you got it. I appreciate that, so if you would, go ahead and make that correction, if you would.
I'm going to be saying the first motion.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I move to approve a resolution to hold a public hearing for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, water department budget and rates as requested by the, uh, water department with amendment that it will happen, the public hearing on December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you very much, ma'am, supported by the chair, if you would be so kind as to call the roll, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Councilwoman Shafi?
Yes, but here.
Councilwoman Martin?
Four times, yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Councilpro Tim Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, thank you very much, motion carries, uh, for item nine B, thank you very much there, ma'am. Um, for item nine B under the, uh, resolution requesting the public advertisement for purposes of receiving construction bids for the twenty twenty-three water main and service line replacement project as funded by the American Rescue Plan State Revolving Fund grant. A R P funded. City Council, what is your pleasure on item nine B?
I move to approve a resolution requesting the public advertisement for purposes of receiving construction bids for the two thousand twenty-three water main and service line replacement project as funded by the American Rescue Plan. State Revolving Fund Grant A R P funded.
I'll cheer off for a second. Madam Clerk, if you'd be so kind as to call the roll for us.
Councilwoman Shafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Councilpro Tim Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we have finished everything on our agenda tonight. The only thing we have left is citizens' participation in council affairs. Are there citizens who would like to be heard? Give me just a second to get to two minutes, sir. All right, if you would, my state and your name, and the floor is yours.
Uh, my name is Nathan Harvey, resident and, uh, business owner in Highland Park. I had a comment about, uh, uh, the sale of city-owned property. Councilwoman Shafi raised some issues a few council meetings ago, and I wanted to know if the council has been apprised of, uh, which, um, chapter twelve, planning and zoning, uh, chapters within the, uh, current zoning ordinance? Because the ones that were listed by Councilwoman Shafi were not current. And that was a little troubling, so I was curious if, uh, council had been apprised of which planning and zoning, uh, chapters were actually in force. And the other one was, uh, ordinance sections two oh eight ten and two oh eight eleven. Uh, it was mentioned that, uh, properties needed to be voted on by a council vote of four, uh, in favor and one against for any properties, but particularly properties that were up for redevelopment. And I believe that once you consider the charter, uh, that is in error. So I just wanted, had you been apprised of that yet or not?
I guess the answer will go to the person who, who leveled the question.
Okay. Uh, still waiting on zoning, still waiting on that information. And as far as ordinance two oh eight point ten and two oh eight point eleven, n- not all property development only, major development requires a vote of four. It's a current ordinance, it was written by the mayor, by Councilwoman Rodney Patrick, and the previous administration, that rule is in effect, it's for development. It's not for the sale of vacant lots and things of that nature, it's for development. It requires a vote of four for development.
Could you, so we're still within your timeframe, I extended it out to three minutes for you, Mr. Harvey. Uh, could you inform Mr. Harvey where he can find that in writing?
Yes.
Oh, it's in, it's in two oh eight ten and two oh eight eleven, and I know what it says. It doesn't say what Councilwoman Shafi just said.
Okay, all right then, well.
But the question is, what it does say is defined by the charter, and you would have to know that it was in the charter to know that the two oh eight and two eleven, two eight ten and two eight eleven were speaking to those particular kinds of properties.
Got you, I understand.
That's all.
Okay, thank you so much, sir, we'll come up on three minutes.
Oh, hold on a second, uh, Mr. Harvey, understand that even though y- you may feel that these ordinances are not current, these ordinances are still on the books. And until they are repealed or removed or changed, this is the law. Whether you like it or not, we are following what is currently on the books. Every single, i- it's the same thing about stopping at a red light. It's old, it's antiquated, but it's still on the books.
Okay, so Ms. Shafi, this is citizens' comment, I'm gonna stop you both right here, I'm gonna stop you both right here. I heard you, sir, I heard you, sir. This is a citizens' comment, so, Mr. Harvey, I did hear you, I heard every word you said, and I was listening. So I do thank you, I went over deliberately, I heard you, I heard everything you said, and I was listening. So, that's, that's.
I'm really, I'm really saying this to let all the council members know, if there's any question about whether Mr. Shafi is correct or not, you need to resolve that question in your own mind because I don't think he's correct.
Okay, you're.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, okay. Sir, if you would state your name?
Uh, Joshua Lamir, Highland Park architect, that's a hard act to follow, thank you, sir. I was just wondering if, um, so we've got some major parcels in town, we've got the Model T plant, we got the old Highland Park High School, we got the new Highland Park High School, we got the Liberty School, we got, oh, we got the old Cortland School, the new Cortland School, are they all being properly assessed for, uh, how you say, uh, water runoff? Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
Um. Ms. Square, um, would that be, uh, would it be appropriate to have, um, uh, our water board in Highland Park?
You have to have an ordinance, so, you know, the boards and commissions in Highland Park are in the charter. And I don't, I don't see that it's in there, so that would be part of some kind of legislative change. You've got, uh, council, it's a small town.
That's messed up.
Yeah, but, but it's, you know what, you have to look at it as an opportunity.
Yeah.
Don't look at it as messed up, look at it as an opportunity. That's what you gotta do, you know, look at it as an opportunity. Sure, it's messed up, it's a basic, because everybody's looking at developers, the golden looms.
That's all I'm saying, so we can set some things up so we can watch the golden looms.
Developers like messed up.
Yes, yes, I understand, I, I, I like business, I like messed up places, and that brings me to the next question. So, um, I think that we need to, um, like the developers and people that come in, the people that live here, we don't know them, we need to see them, we need to sit with them, and that's where, you know, like the planning permission come in because in planning, you know, the community can say what we want to see, what we, you know, but we don't see that, we don't get to see that the majors, the ma- the people.
This is, Ms. Square.
I know, I understand.
Okay.
But that's where that, that's.
But you understand what I'm saying, okay, to the council, okay, to the council. You need to get mailers out to the community, you know, uh, do we have a PR person here?
Uh, the mayor does, yeah.
Okay, do they send out mailers, you know, what do a PR person do?
If you say.
We, we need mailers to go out.
We get emails, we get, we get email blasts, we get stuff sent to us via social media, we get emails, at least two emails a week from the city announcing the events that take place, at least two a week.
Well, do the community know that? I'm just thinking that, is there something in the budget where we can get mailers once a month to say what's going on, what's happening in the city? And there go your regular little old person can say, let me post this on my refrigerator door, I want to go, you know, see this and see what's happening, because you don't, you don't know what's happening. don't know what's happening. And look, I don't even, like a community, like a computer person, you're not always on the computer, but mail, we can understand.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Fry. We went to three for you.
Well. Another question, Miss Square.
No, Ms., no, Ms. Fry.
You know, and that thing, you said something about a temporary meter?
Ms. Fry.
What did you mean by that?
Ms., Ms. Fry.
I understand.
Okay.
When we talk about meters, it's, it's all kinds of meters. You've got meters on your home. That's a retail. The whole fight was about the meter at the gate where the water comes into the city. Right now, it's coming in an emergency line at six mile and a half. Uh, the, the ideal spot, the post spot would be off of the quinder, right at the plant, because it's a big line, and we, our vision is to get a new tower to pressurize it, and that's a pile of the shoe water that I mentioned. The issue that you might be feeling with the temporary meter is that there were some temporary meters on the emergency lines a few years ago, but they were removed by legal, actually when they started to work. Uh, so that's the confusion about the me, you know, the meters. Uh, I think what I said is the temporary budget. So this period that's, the public hearing is about is from January to July first, so that we can negotiate next year's rates. You know, we have to enter into a standard contract with Lee, but that has a whole specification part of it, and so that's what we're doing now. So we are still visually at work. The work is still working, but we have negotiated these, and we're, and we're trying to use the best available information based on some of the information that we got for those temporary meters. But it's very, very confusing. This, this subject, if you keep it simple, you're better off, because there's a lot of moving parts, which is why I have no voice.
Because it sounds like the water, that decision is still going through some negotiation.
Well, the legislature is the money.
Okay.
So that was done, but this deal could fall apart. It could still fall apart. If, if all the sides don't do the things that it needs to do, you know, we'd be back to where we were in May, you know, April. But we're not gonna let it fall apart, because we're gonna take these, these limits, and we're gonna turn them into a lemonade.
Right.
Because we're, we're gonna, we need this, the city needs, and we're gonna report, we're not.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, City Council, consider sending out some mailers.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Yes, sir. Would you mind stating your name, please?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, business owner, Highland Park. Um, the first question I wanted to ask is, uh, why can't City Council, directed to the head of City Council, why can't, uh, City Council have their own attorney? So when people like Nate Harvey comes up here and asks questions of law and stuff that's in the charter, you could, you guys could already discuss it with your own attorney, so you could have, because that's the mayor's attorney. So you guys could have a complete understanding. So that's my question to you. Now, uh, I got a question from some of my Michigan State brothers over there. Um, now you're talking about the water going up. Did you calculate for the sewer also going up? The, the hundred dollars includes the sewer and sewer. Okay. Okay. It will, usually it's a separate calculation. So what about the empty lots that are receiving any water? How do you do the calculation on the runoff water from the empty lot? How's that calculation, Mr. Engineer Spartan?
No, this is not, this is not, that's what I was, this is not quite, I'm letting you go. This is not question and answer. This is not, we've never, we've been doing this all year long, and people tend to answer their questions during council affairs if they want to address those things.
Okay.
But this is three minutes for you to make a public comment. It's been the same since, since I moved here.
Okay, well, uh.
I know, so, so that, so you asked a detailed question that they could probably tell you. They take twenty minutes.
Okay.
They take twenty minutes to answer your question.
Okay.
Exactly. That's my point. Thank you so much for that, ma'am.
The other thing was about, um, thaw, you mentioned thaw back in the day when my aunt was the one who was protesting to save Highland Park houses when they were trying to take them back in the day. Mama Lila Capo, you could Google her. Um, thaw ran out of money for Highland Park. They completely ran out. People were calling thaw. They didn't have any money at all whatsoever. And then the other thing is that the Democrats are still in c- control of the House, the Senate, the Attorney General, and the governor.
I'm not arguing with you, sir.
Okay.
And, and the governor, you might want to reach out to the governor, because the governor is working with thaw to provide funds for Highland Park. It's not Highland Park.
Well, I understand that, but the last, the last time thaw ran out, this was before you got here.
You might want to send her over there.
Okay.
Yes, sir, and that is your three minutes. Thank you very much. Before we go into the next person here, I'm just looking, just looking, just looking. Okay, on the seventeenth of November, uh, judge rules Michigan House violated open meetings law in a hearing related to gun control. The point that the Attorney General wanted to make, this Attorney General Nestle, is that Michigan residents are not entitled to an absolute unlimited in-person testimony during public comment. The rules of that community are determined within the community. The two-minute rule has existed, and today I'm going three and a half, four minutes. So I just want to make sure that that is well known. You can go look it up yourself. We're not at the school board meeting. You can go look it up yourself. Okay, so that was Monday. That was November seventeen. This case law just came out, so if anybody wants to argue the point, you could just go look it up. How are you, sir?
Good evening. My name is Speed Miller, Metro Part of the Lodge nine sixty-two of the Elks. Uh, I got two informations and one question.
Yes, sir.
Okay, the first question to the police department to find out wh- where are we at with the break-ins we had at our lodge and the merchandise that we had left. The officer was here before and said he would get back with me, and that was about a month ago, in which I never received no information or nothing from the police department. I'll just leave it right there. Question, uh, number two is that, uh, information, this is for the whole community, is that, uh, we was playing, we had a drum line at Barbara Elementary School. We moved, uh, we had, we moved the drum line to the, uh, Ford Recreation Area. Now we have, uh, George Washington Carver, and we have Barbara Elementary School kids going to the recreation center for the drum line. Right now, Karen, we have about, I'd say about twenty-two kids, but some come one day, some come the other day. Meet on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. If you got any kids who want to learn how to play drums, ready to see it, bring them out. What we're trying to do is have Highland Park have their own drum line. Now, uh, we was headed together. We could have been in the Thanksgiving Day Parade, but we ain't got it together, but we're working on it. This is for the community. Another thing, I am the Imperial Chief Deputy of the Shrine Mountain Patrol, and what I'm trying to do is get some kind of information. How can I start a youth mountain patrol here in Highland Park? If you give me any kind of information, I would appreciate it. We want to get stuff in here for our kids here. Thank you on behalf of the Elks and Prince Hall Shrine.
Thank you, sir. You can get my card before you leave here today. Can you repeat your name, please?
Speed Miller.
Yes, sir, Mr. Miller. Thank you very much. Okay, I don't see anybody else standing, so thank you very much for those who spoke tonight. We're gonna move into council affairs, starting with the third district.
Good evening, Highland Park. Uh, Ms. Fry, council does have the authority to start its own water authority, you know, but you know where that may end up. Okay, so there may be a little bit of a struggle. I'm saying, but we do have the right to do so. Um, I'm curious about the placement of the meter. I understand that according to the agreement that we signed, the state is paying for the meter, the master meter, to be put in. And my question to engineering is, is it going to be put at the end of Detroit, or is it going to be put at the start, a- at the front of Highland Park? Okay, because that does make a little bit of difference, depending on where they place it.
The, the plant is in Detroit.
Right.
Highland Park Water Plant is in Detroit.
Right.
And so that's the connection.
Mm-hmm. So it's going to be put there?
Before the, uh, before we went on emergency water, that's where the water came from, the plant was down. It came from the equipment line.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's where the switch is too, ain't it? Yeah.
But all the infrastructure.
Is there, yeah, okay.
And we asked years ago, we actually begged them to open it, and we're going to open it. And so, you know, bottom line is, it, it, because it's physically located in Detroit, you know, it's just like that whole leak argument about how this leak, the plant leak. Well, that was leaking in Detroit, but it's definitely leaking in the corporate city limits of Highland Park.
Okay.
But it's gonna be metered, and this is how all the wholesale meters work. See, once you get a meter on that pipe, then you can subtract what was sold to the customers, and then the remaining is what the lease on.
Okay.
So we, we're, our proposal is for that location, but Eagle's got to approve.
Okay, 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 that's cool. Okay, and then, um, and then, um, question two for engineer. I keep asking the same thing over and over. I would love to know where we are with the Act fifty-one funds, what is in the funds, and, uh, what condition it is in. You know, I, I can, I can never seem to get that answer. You know, nobody never seems to have an answer for me, but you're over the Act fifty-one funds as the, a- as the, as, uh, the, uh, agent of, uh, appointed o- over that particular act of funds. I would like an update for council as to where we are w- w- with those funds and how much is in those funds, and I know that we're entitled to have that information. You know, so I'm, I'm asking for that. Now, having said that, I got a little bit of a problem. I got a little bit of a beef, and I'm going to address the residents of Highland Park directly. I am so tired. I'm so drained about how people attempt to pick and choose what part of this city law you're going to follow and what you're not going to follow. I don't care how old it is. I don't care how long it's been sitting there. If it's still on the books, it still applies. I don't care what's going on. I don't care if it was written back in two thousand and four, if it was written back in eighty-nine. If it's still on the books, it applies, whether you like this or not. We've gotten into a bad habit here in Highland Park, and we're setting example for outsiders who come in here and think that they can do whatever the H they want to do in this city, because they're watching our example of how we decide we're gonna do what we want to do. Okay, there's a church over by me right now that has built a whole new structure on the side of its building. I don't know who approved that or where that came from, but people do what they want to do here. Highland Parkers do what they want to do here, and this is a problem, because you're giving rise and precedent to outsiders to come in here and do what the H they want to do with no questions asked and no problems. We have to get in the mindset in this city. I don't care what the rule is. I don't care what's on the books. If it tells me I can't spit on the sidewalk after four P M. on a Friday afternoon, then that's the law. That is the law here in H P. We must follow the rules. We have a city right now, even, even amongst us, ladies and gentlemen, right now, we have a city that is trying to combine the zoning and the planning as one entity. They've even sat here in this council and said it's the same entity. No, it's not. It's two separate entities. It's not the same. Planning and zoning is separate, but you have the administration trying to combine these two to circumvent the rules. And I'm so tired of the problems of this going on from day to day. How do we get outsiders to obey the rules if we're unwilling to do it our damn selves? How does that work out for us? How does that look? I'm going to tell you, don't break into my neighbor's house, but I'm gonna go in his backyard and steal his grill. Help me understand that. Tell me where that makes sense. If the rule is on the books, ladies and gentlemen, it is the law. I don't care how old it is. I don't care how antiquated it is. Until we can come together and change these old antiquated rules without having a veto by the mayor, it's gonna be the law on the books. It's what's going on. And every time we've attempted to make adjustments or make changes, our adjustments and changes were vetoed, and we didn't have enough votes to overturn that veto, because it was split three to two, and you need a four vote to overturn the mayor's veto. Am I correct? Is that not the rule on the books? Okay, then. So we need to start setting the example, H P, of following the rules, going by the guidelines, and making sure that we don't give rise and precedence to outsiders coming in here thinking they can do whatever they want, because you do whatever you want. This is H P. This is our survival. This is our city. We've been given a new lease on life. This state has breathed life back into us. Thank God for the governor. Thank God for State Rep Mike McFaul. Thank God for Steph, uh, thank God for Stephanie Chang and all of the people who fought diligently to make sure the Highland Park survived. Let's follow the rules. I keep saying it over and over, but nobody's listening to me. We don't get to pick and choose here. If I can't break the rules, why should you? Because I guarantee you, if I break a rule up here, you'll bounce my Muslim butt so fast I can see my hair spinning. Now tell me I'm lying. Tell me if I did the same thing they doing, that you wouldn't bounce me up out of here. So why do they get a break and I don't? The law has to apply across the board, ladies and gentlemen, or what good is it? What's its purpose? We might as well throw everything out and going back to the days of the wild, wild west, not Mityaiden streets. Because that's what it leads to. It leads to anarchy. It leads to chaos. It leads to disruption. It leads to problems, problems that you can't afford to have. We need to grow. So please, don't pick and choose what you're going to follow in this city. Follow it all. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Hello, good evening, citizens. Um, I'm just gonna keep this really short and brief. Um, Mama Nandi, when you were talking about the website, were you talking about events or what's going on in Highland Park? Like, what did you want that to look like?
The, uh, the meeting, the, 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 the new development, what's happening with council, the governmental stuff, the legislative stuff, that, that we need to know.
And so that's what you want the mailers, to be on the mailers?
The community needs to know.
Okay. Well, I'm not even, when I say events, I'm not talking about just events that the mayor's doing, events that's happening all over the city. I mean, you, you have events at your, at your establishment?
At all.
Okay.
Governmental.
Just government stuff?
City business.
Okay, got it.
Development. What's happening with the water?
Okay.
What's happening with our natural?
Okay.
Things like that.
Okay. Um, thank you for that. Um, number two, I, what I don't really understand is how can we be a city that's in distress, and at the same time, we have the money for lawsuits and purchases, and I, I don't understand how we are, are both. That's something I don't really understand about Highland Park. Um, and number three, um, it sounds like there are some ordinance that definitely need to be amended, where everybody understands collectively what that particular ordinance is saying, where it's not misunderstood. It's being read, interpreted one way, and then be interpreted another. It sounds like some of these old ordinance need to be amended. And at this moment, thank you for coming out, staying this evening. Appreciate you all for being here, and anybody who's on Zoom, and I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Manica.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Ms. Manica, the floor is yours.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So wake up, everybody. Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna start with, um, Mr. Ashafi kind of brought, brought up a few things about, um, following. So I just want to give this information. When is a permit needed? A permit is required for all construction, remodeling, and maintenance, except those items classified as normal maintenance in the code. Typical projects requiring permits include, but are not limited to, additions, demolition, electrical systems and services, exterior concrete, exterior siding, miscellaneous residential, including quieter places, pools, decks, and garages, new buildings, plumbing systems, heating, ventilating, and air conditioning, prefabricated structures, renovations, replacement of furnace or air conditioning, replacement of roof and/or ceiling, replacement of water heaters, replacement of windows, residential sheds over two hundred square feet, and normal maintenance. There are some things that you don't need, uh, permits for, like painting. But there is a small line in there, so you want to make sure that what you're talking about, your painting, is, is in that, that you don't need a permit. Repair of broken windows, repair of faucets, replacement of electric switches or outlets, replacement of kitchen cabinets with no structural drywall, plumbing, or electrical changes, tuck pointing of masonry, and some flooring. I said some flooring. So those were just kind of general. Uh, that was the biggest picture. You can go to our, um, and they can give you just what I just gave you. Okay, so I just wanted to bring that up. I also wanted to point out, I had kind of had an order here, but I guess I should give all the good things last, right, guys? Drum line, uh, he mentioned it, Mr. Miller, I was going to bring that up. Thank you to the Elks. Also, I want to say thank you to everyone, that's including religious organizations, the Elks, Avalon Village who gave out, um, things for Thanksgiving to our community and even outside of our community here. Also, I want to mention two eleven Glendale has housing for veterans under seven hundred dollars. I don't have all the information, so you should go to B Baker at D R M M dot org for that information. Also, remember, congratulations to Ms. Harris on her nomination to the CNN Hero of the Year Award. Um, she has not been, uh, actually made the hero of the year, but right now it's just the nomination. Also, C D A C, Community District Advisory Council, for District One, it will be open to individuals to send their resume or a letter of qualifications and skills that would say why they should be maybe part of C D A C, uh, for the coming new year. District One has so far this year did cleanups, as well as we have new garbage cans. They are just working on those, um, to be put out. Also, we did the, uh, beautification of City Hall in the front, and will be also assisting during Christmas. I also hope, I know the mayor wasn't able to speak today, but normally the mayor and Avalon Village usually have a competition for Christmas on decorating. And I can't remember which one, I'm gonna be honest, right now does the tour of going around the city to look at people who have decorated. So during Halloween, there were some exceptionally nice decorations in houses and our residence that our residents did. And that's something we need to continue and keep up, and we need to start catching up with that. That actually brings morale to your city and actually says something about Highland Park. That we are not horrible. We are not forgotten, and we do care. Okay, so I'm asking that, hey, make an opportunity to decorate, even if it's just a little bit, if you can, and that goes for businesses as well. If you have an opportunity, decorate on Woodward, if you're on Woodward or wherever you are. Show that you are part of this community and, and come aboard with that. I took the time and I appreciate the engineering department so much. Uh, I put in, some of the residents came to me with reported possible sinkholes and possible ground, uh, ground wear and tear. And we went around last week, thank you, and walked and seen all those sites, myself and the engineering department, so they are on top of it. They will have to reallocate different areas, uh, to maybe help, but they're only gonna do right now anything that's emergency, because we have to do what we need to do in regards to our water situation. So they're only gonna handle emergency situations in regards to those type of things that the residents reported to me. So, uh, I want to say District One, we visited all the places that you've mentioned to me this year. Let's see if I covered everything. Narcan. Am I seeing that right, Narcan?
Narcan.
Narcan. Training is coming up. Oh, I forgot today. This is at the, um,
Twenty-ninth.
The twenty-ninth, thank you. November twenty-ninth at the police department. You must enroll if you like to get that training. That training is available to the citizens. You must go to E Monroe, E M O N R O E, at HighlandParkM I dot gov. So remember that. I also want to say thank you to the fire department. Um, I seen them out several times, but again, they were at the, uh, in the police department, but the fire department was just out recently with Head Start children, uh, with talking about fire safety, showing them the engine, but most of all, talking to them about fire safety. I think I have covered, uh, pretty much everything. I am in agreeance that, guys, give us a chance, I said this before, to go over the ordinance, charter, et cetera. That is coming. So if we're incorrect, if we're incorrect, it will be corrected. If we're not, it may still be there. If it's outdated, it may go away. If it's not outdated, it may, is definitely gonna stay or be changed. So again, we are making progress, and I, I thank you all for your participation. Last thing from me in regards to citizens, and that is as citizens also, Ms. Frye and some other people, but because you brought up, you know, the information, there's always a lot of information downstairs, more than I've seen before in City Hall. Some is posted outside, some is at the rec center. Now, we may need to put some posting somewhere else. Right now, I probably don't think we're gonna do mailing, but if you attend the event that's coming up, or like the, uh, town hall that existed, that happened, the senior programs, et cetera, there is a list where they get your email, so that they can email you different things at different events. Now, I will be honest with you. They're not going to put all that government information, and some things we just cannot put out there. And I get that, that everybody wants to know. Uh, but the biggest thing we can do is direct you to the people who can actually give you a real, clear answer. And sometimes that's just square, no, no, it's not you, okay. Sometimes that's the engineering department, sometimes that's administration. And if it has to do with something that's in somebody's district, then come to that city council member and maybe they can give it to you or direct you to that answer and that resource. I did say lastly, I promise you, this is the last thing, resources do run out. I don't care how much money is given. Resources do run out. So if all of us go get the resource, and it may take up a hundred million dollars, if that's all they had, then unfortunately it's gone. So that means we need to already get our ducks in a row, our paperwork all set and lined up, so when that window open, we can be the first person there to apply for that resource. So we won't be at the end of that. And that goes for not just Thor, that goes for Lake Metro, that goes for Salvation Army, that goes for St. Vincent de Paul. It goes for all of them. And I am a person who had to learn that as well. If you have your paperwork and your information ready, when they open that window for you to come along and get that resource, you go and you be right there and be first, and hopefully you are eligible for it. That is it for me. I thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Highland Park. I love you guys. Really don't have anything to say, but you can always call me and come to me. And I will help you to find out anything, and we can find out the information and see what's going on in the city together. And I want to apologize for my passion not being here. He called me, he had a district meeting. Okay, that's, okay, that's it. I love y'all. Call me if you need me.
All right, thank you, ma'am. So, to Mr. Harvey first. Mr. Harvey, you were correct. You were correct. The statement that you made about the difference between the ordinance and the charter, you were correct. You were correct. And the only way someone would know that is if they actually went and read what you were saying to make a cross-reference. That's it. You were correct then, you're correct now. And so that's one of the things that's gonna be incumbent upon people in the community. You can't take, I, I, you cannot take my word for anything when there is a document that you can go look at yourself. And the ability to interpret that document is incumbent upon the people in the community. This is one of the most dynamic communities in southeastern Michigan for years. So everybody is gonna have to come up to the level that you're talking about, to the gentleman who asked a question about whether or not we should be able to hire a separate attorney. Again, all you have to do is be, what is it, twenty-one years of age, eighteen years of age to be an elected official? But competency is something that people really have to work at. We are supposed to read these documents and try to make a rational judgment on what we're reading, and if we need additional help, the attorney that's been provided to us will give us general legal advice. That's what they're here for. Anything beyond that, we would have to go hire our own attorney individually, individually for our questions. They are at least, at least, they are at least worth their time. So we can't just take them and say, hey, you know, I have a, I have, I just want to talk to you about some stuff. They're lawyers. They get paid for their knowledge. If we ask them a question for every ten minutes you spend talking to a lawyer, they're gonna spend probably an hour trying to find an answer to those questions. So why we, why we would need to go hire an additional attorney to interpret our documents when we have attorneys here that are very willing and able to help us interpret our documents? Sometimes we ignore what they tell us. There's a room full of lawyers. You know, two, three hundred years of legal knowledge, and they, we ignore what they tell them. So, I mean, you have cancer and your doctor tells you to change your lifestyle and you say, oh, think about it. I mean, it's only your life, so it's your knowledge. So to your point, and again, I spent the day in Lansing, and people are watching Highland Park very closely. When we talk about we want to do things by the rules, they can see what we are and are, are not doing. As it relates to the comment about zoning and planning, so we have a zoning board of appeals. Zoning Board of Appeals was reactivated in twenty seventeen. Planning Commission has been around forever uninterrupted. The Planning Commission is considered the general zoning body. As a planning commissioner from twenty thirteen, we had training every other year to explain to us who and what we are. We received that training. It was available for people within the community. So, the Planning Commission, that word, that Planning Commission is the zoning body. They grant exceptions, and unless there's a problem where someone doesn't like a decision that the zone, that the Planning Commission has, in that case, they get a chance to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals, which is an appellate board designed to review the decisions made by the Planning Commission, compare it to the current zoning framework. Those individuals on the zoning board have to then go study and make comparative analysis of what is in our zoning ordinance and what other communities do, and they render a decision on that as an appeal. It's always been that way. It's always been that way. Very little has changed. Um, to what Ms. Manica said about the type of permits that are required, just specifically, she was talking about city building permits. None of those things have to come before city council. Private property owners have the latitude to go to the building department to make improvements on their property. That is their only stop. They don't have to come, you don't have to come to city council, you want to put a driveway in. If it doesn't fit the zoning, you have to go to Planning Commission. If Planning Commission renders your decision, a decision that you don't like, then you go to the zoning board. That's the process. It has always been that way. And so people in the audience, those folks at home, the, the quality of education in Highland Park at one time was second to none. So we have to stop undercutting the capacity for learning at the time. That means you gotta go pick up a book and read it. Don't trust anyone else's opinion. Everything that you need is right there. So if someone wants to have this far-flung idea about an alternate reality, all you have to do is go look at what's there in black and white. That's that. So I want to thank, um, Aaron Petway and Dice Clark, two entrepreneurs in the city of Detroit who for the last three years have been providing senior feast for LaBelle Towers and for Bishop Moore. Um, the goal there is to appreciate the seniors, the elders who helped to shape the framework of our lives, and they want to feed them on days that are not the holidays. So for some people, having a meal on a Saturday night can make the difference between making or breaking their week. And so I want to thank those gentlemen. This past weekend, we were out at LaBelle Towers. We were out at, uh, Bishop Moore, and, you know, all the floors came down and were fed by the volunteers. We're all members of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated. We volunteer, we give back to the community. Um, that, members of our organization include the former mayor of the city of Detroit, um, half the judges that you've seen on the bench, more lawyers than can fit in this room, but these people in their professional capacity also give back to the community, and I thought it was a wonderful event. And I do appreciate them for singling out our community. Both of those dudes are from Detroit, but they know uh, seniors or elders, as we call them in those buildings, and they wanted to do this, um, uh, from the goodness of their heart. And so I appreciate them for picking our community and for investing the time, energy, and resources to make sure that, uh, our seniors are appreciated. So with that, having concluded all business related to the city of Highland Park, the chair is open to entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion on the floor to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Meeting adjourned at eight thirty-nine.